The county commission meeting, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning, and please, just a reminder to silence your cell phones and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly, and if you need a listening device, Robert will be able to help you in the front row there. With that, we'll start with routine business.
Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Approve the agenda. Motion to approve.
Second, thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. I do believe we do need to defer item 11 because we do not have five commissioners here. Could I have an amendment to the agenda? Or do you just want to defer it when we get there?
We can defer it when we get there.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item number two is to approve the county commission minutes of October 8th, 2013.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any corrections or changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $800,090.28.
Pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item four are reports. Item A is the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of September 30th, 2013, and B is the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report as of September 2013. Those are placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
Move routine action.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine action. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no applications for abatement today. The next item is notices and requests. A notice of a public open house and information meeting was received from the South Dakota Department of Transportation and the City of Sioux Falls for the I-229 major investment corridor study. It's at 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM on October 30th, 2013, at the Sioux Falls Convention Center, 1101 Northwest Avenue in Sioux Falls. There are no planning and zoning notices today, and there are no petition for compromise of lane. The next item is opportunity for public comment.
This is a time for anyone who would like to make comments about any item that's not on the agenda. Looks like a slow-moving group. We'll go to item, or item 10.
Item 10 is to reconsider authorization for the chairman to sign fingerprinting agreement between Minnehaha County and the City of Sioux Falls. Kristin Trana.
Good morning. I'm Kristin Trana with the sheriff's office. I come back to you again this week with a, an adjusted agreement. As I understand it, the city and the county worked together to make some adjustments, providing an article that's going to allow for a 90-day window of terminating the agreement as far as either party would like. So, if you have any questions about it, please let me know.
Thank you, Kristin. So, do you want to have any questions for Kristin? Do you have any comments?
My only comment is, the adjustment that we made might alleviate some of the concerns with the unilateral moving of fees. I talked to the city attorney's office. We agreed on this provision. Basically, it allows you at any point in this term to give written notice of termination for any reason, and then to have that effective in 90 days, so.
I'm sorry, I'm doing signals. I've lost my computer.
I wasn't sure if that non-verbal was for me.
Without a computer, I'm dead. Thank you. I'm sorry. Anybody have any other comments or questions? Commissioner Barth?
Are we going to have to add staff to accommodate this?
Technically, yes. But, in just in a sense that we will just cover additional part-time hours, which is something that we've dealt with with civil process and other, you know, parking lot attendance, stuff like that. That's something that we manage within our department, and we need to manage that within our part-time budget, our part-time salaries.
Sure. So, it's not a new person going to be working here?
We, I'm not sure if I'm understanding for sure what you're, what you're saying.
Are we adding an additional person to the department to accommodate this, or are we just covering it with additional part-time hours?
Both. I'm so sorry. We will have to hire an additional person because the current person who does our fingerprinting does not want to take on that many hours in a week. So, it would be that we would add an additional part-time person to cover approximately 10 hours a week.
I think the explanation is, is that the total number of hours will not change, but we will be needing to hire a part-time person. Is that correct?
If I could, yes, please. It won't be a new budgeted part, it won't be a new budgeted position, no benefits or anything along those lines. Because of the additional hours, we may need to hire additional staff person, but it'll all be within the cost. So, she has a part-time budget, and the sheriff's office has a part-time budget that position may cover through those funds. Does that help?
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Kristin. Any other questions, commissioners? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the fingerprinting agreement. Any other comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item number 11.
Let's consider a motion to accept the donation of one color printer for the purpose of donation to the Helpline Center.
Motion to defer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to defer item 11. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 12 is consider a motion to supplement $1,245.28 from the general fund to the parks budget ASN 17900, representing reimbursement from the Girl Scouts of America for the tree and branch cleanup, and to supplement $1,135.18 from the general fund to the parks budget ASN 17954, representing reimbursement from FEMA. Scott Anderson.
Good morning, Scott. Scott, representing the planning department and the parks department. This is just some housekeeping cleanup. Back in April, we had big ice storm, and the parks staff did some cleanup for the Girl Scouts because they had some tree damage in their leased area. And that amount was $1,245.28. I do want to make a note, though, I had asked to supplement ASN 17900, which is full-time salary, and that should be 17902, which is part-time salary, because they're, all of the staff that did the work came out of the part-time salary. And then the other item is to reimburse, or to move money from the general fund to ASN 17954, which is parks and recreation material. That represents reimbursement for materials, gasoline, equipment from FEMA for the cleanup. So, I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Is this money that came into the county, so we put it in the general fund, and now we're just transferring it over to your department because that's where the expenses were?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the, we actually expended the funds to clean up the Girl Scouts portion of Walleye because there were a lot of trees that were damaged. As you remember, it happened in April, and we were getting, I mean, the park was going to be open in two or three weeks, and the Girl Scouts didn't have, well, everyone was swamped, but they couldn't find anyone to actually do the work, and we were out there, so we've all said we could do that and then just reimburse them for the hours. So, it helped them, and they paid the reimbursement fee for the, for the park staff to do that work for them.
Take the motion to approve the supplements to 17902 and to 17954. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve both supplements. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign change order number one for a decrease in the amount of $10,453.69 to the contract with Laptop Paving Company for Project MC-149BM-13, profile and asphalt overlay on four miles of county highway 149. Tom Wilsley.
I'm Tom Wilsley from the highway department. This project, well, mostly items are just adjustments, final, minor adjustments of They, we documented and measured all the items out in the field and ended up with a underrun of 10,000 dollars.
Any questions to Tom? Is there a motion to sign the change order?
Second.
I made the motion, he seconded it. I hadn't made the motion yet.
We have a motion and a second to.
Take a breath.
I think we're ready. We have a motion and a second to approve the change order. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign change order number one for a decrease in the amount of $38,271.35 to the contract with Asphalt Surfacing Company for Project Seal 2013. Tom Wilsley.
Once again, this is adjustment to final quantities. The biggest pay item on this was the oil that we shot through Chip Seal. They shot it at a slightly light, less rate, but still made a good product, so.
Thank you. Questions for Tom?
Just a comment. I'd like to thank you for returning money and being diligent with your work.
Pardon?
I said, "I'd like to thank you for returning your money and being diligent with your work in order to return some." And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the change order. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 15 is to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between Minnehaha County and HDR Engineering for professional engineering services for Structure 50-294-70, one-half-mile east of the intersection of 251st Street and 483rd Avenue over Pipestone Creek. D.J. Boothby.
Good morning, commissioners. D.J. Boothby, highway superintendent. This structure is approximately two miles north of Garrettson and a mile and a half west of Garrettson, working with the design, or with the engineering consultant, HDR Engineering. And this is to complete, basically, the full design package to bring us through the letting phase of the project, and, which is, which is a little bit abnormal compared to what we usually do. We usually do a preliminary engineering phase where we determine the type, size, and location of the structure, but in this case, we know what the type, size, and location of the structure is going to be, and so we felt comfortable with just proceeding ahead with a design agreement with the consultant. The highway department has already completed the topo and boundary survey for the project and provided that to the consultant for their use, and we will also be doing the environmental permitting with the Army Corps of Engineers. So, if you have any more questions, I can answer them now.
Anyone have any questions for D.J.? Is there a motion?
Show move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, I'm assuming, the agreement. With that, is there any other questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 16 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Banner Associates for professional engineering services for Structure 50-142-120 and 50-143-120 northwest of Crooks over Willow Creek. D.J. Boothby.
Good morning, commissioners. Again, D.J. Boothby. This is a, a little bit of a unique project because we have a existing bridge right next to a box culvert, immediately adjacent to one another on our county highway, and the bridge itself is in very poor condition and needs to be replaced. And we're not sure why they built a bridge in a box culvert right next to each other. We have our ideas, but we're not exactly sure, but what we're planning on doing is taking both of them out and replacing them with a single structure, much easier to maintain, and then we can build out the, the proper size of structure. This is a functionally obsolete bridge that is too narrow and unsafe in the roadway. But the consultant here will be under our more typical or standard agreement, which is through the TSNL, the Type, Size, and Location Study, and we will be doing our own environmental permitting. However, they will be doing their own survey work for this project because of workload and after the TSNL is completed, and we'll be coming back for a more traditional design agreement. So, I can answer any questions at this time.
So, anyone have any questions to D.J. on this?
Just a question on the environmental. When we're replacing or repairing something, not, not building, I don't understand why we have to do an environmental again, and if we do, do you have any idea what, what it costs to do that portion of the project?
They have varying degrees of complexity, and the biggest impact around this part of the state is whether or not it's a Topeka Shiner stream.
It's a what?
Minnows.
Okay.
Minnows are an endangered species, believe it or not, not necessarily around here, but they are prevalent in certain streams, and Willow Creek is one of those streams. However, Topeka Shiners haven't been found in that stream since before 1990. And so, typically, when we know we're going into a stream that has a history of Topeka Shiners, we know that that can delay the project several months. However, because it's been so long since they've been found in Willow Creek, we don't know if there's going to be any delay, and so we don't really know exactly what the complexity is of this project, is what I'm trying to get at. But normally, it's, it's a couple thousand dollars, up to maybe $4,000 of consultant fees that, that we're saving every time we do our own environmental permitting.
Is that the same little guy that delayed Highway 100?
I'm, I don't think so. I don't think so. But I wasn't involved in that project, so I'm not exactly sure. I think they had some snakes.
Probably about the same size.
Probably about the same size.
Any other questions? Is there a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 17 is consider a resolution to set weight load limits on certain bridges within Minnehaha County. D.J. Boothby.
Commissioners, this year, we, we completed annual bridge inspections on about 20 structures. Those are different from the biannual inspections that we complete every two years on all of our structures. These, these structures that we inspected this year, we know are in rough shape, and that is why they need to be inspected every single year. As a result of inspect, or reviewing the inspections with their consultant a couple weeks ago, or last week, we decided to do two new postings on, on structures that were not previously posted. One of them is, is the structure that we just discussed with the Banner Associates agreement on county highway 130, I believe that one is, and the other one is a little bit south and west of Garrettson. Those are both new postings, and they're posted at 50% of their legal capacity. And the third one is the northeast corner of Bell Rapids, which we also have a design agreement right now with CDI, and we'll be bidding that over the wintertime for reconstruction next year. That one was previously posted at 16-ton, 26-ton, and 30-ton, and what we're doing is reducing the, the posting limit to 10-ton, 18-ton, and 21-ton for the different truck types. And I've included some, a map and, and some posting information in your packets for you to review. Also, as part of this resolution, we are removing the closed bridge resolution from the Baltic Bridge, which has been reconstructed and is now open to traffic, but we figured we better do the formality of opening the bridge back up through resolution. So, if you have any questions about those structures or, or anything, I can answer them now.
Commissioner Barth?
D.J., I'm not sure of the name of the bridge, but there's one that I've gotten a couple calls about in Split Rock Township. Are you familiar with that bridge? And I don't know which bridge it is.
I'm not, well, is it the Spook Road Bridge, possibly?
You said the rebar is showing through the deck or whatever.
Okay.
And is that one on our list to demolish?
That's the one that we were discussing the last couple weeks about the DOT award.
Right. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
That's it.
Any other questions for D.J.? Not, is there a motion for the resolution?
Motion for the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thanks, D.J.
Thank you.
Item 18 is consider a resolution to establish the effective date and adoption of the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center Policy and Procedure Manual. Ryan Thornell and Todd Cheever.
Morning, Ryan.
Good morning, commissioners. Ryan Thornell, University of Sioux Falls. As you know, I was here two weeks ago, delivered the policy manual for the JDC that we finished up, so we are back here. I'm back here specifically to answer any questions you might have after reviewing the policy manual. Todd Cheever is also here to answer any questions, perhaps regarding implementation or the effective date, and I believe there's a resolution that's been proposed for consideration today. So, I'll answer any questions that you all might have.
Commissioner?
Thanks, Ryan, for your work. It's rather dry, dry reading, takes a long time to get through it. I'm just wondering if our juvenile guidebook needed to be updated, or, because, I mean, there wasn't a copy in my book, so I'm just wondering where we're at with that.
The juvenile guidebook does need to be updated, but it hasn't, we've remained hands-off of the juvenile guidebook until the policies are implemented and all the kinks are worked out specifically in the JDC. And then what I was told was that the trainer was going to go back and then update the guidebook, because it's separate from the policy manual. We've attached it to the admissions policy, but it serves as a standalone document. And so, once everything is implemented and all of the seamless transitions are taking place, then they would go back and update that.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
My question is, the training manual, I'm just wondering if that's also has to be updated, or has been updated, or where we're at with the training manual, part of it?
That was, again, a separate standalone document that, it was my understanding the training coordinator was going to be putting together as the training and implementation was taking place during this process.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Ken, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm just wondering if, if those also will need to be approved by the commission, the juvenile guidebook and the training manual will have to come to us for approval.
I'm not sure that it does, and that, because I think the, that manual is an administrative document that relies on the policies and procedures, and that, so I'm not so certain that it does, but it certainly will verify for sure.
Okay.
Yes.
I have another question for Ryan. This is consider the policies and procedures book, but do we need a specific procedural manual, or is this what we use for the procedural manual? Do you?
Every agency does it a little bit differently. I think the, the size of the JDC allows that the policy manual can serve as the procedure manual as well, because it's not an overly large agency. Larger agencies typically have a policy manual and then an operations memorandum manual, but I don't think that the, from what I've been involved with the JDC, I don't see that necessary.
Okay. I have another question.
Just keep going.
On the health assessments, the policy states that if the, the juvenile has had a physical in the last year at the JDC, then they don't have to have a repeat one. I'm wondering about kids who got, had their athletic physicals. Those are basically the same thing that we've approved in our policy or going to approve, and is there a way that, if the school's got record of those physicals done, why do we have to do them again? Why do we have to, you know, replicate the expense? And also, if a parent's got a, a current physical, but a lot of high school kids go through those high school physicals, and I'm just wondering if we can have that as part of our policy, that if there's documentation that's been done in the last year, why are we repeating it?
I don't think it would need to be repeated.
Yeah. And I'm just wondering if that needs to be put in the policy that we would accept. So, maybe make an amendment and bring that back.
Sure.
That if there's documentation of an outside physical.
You make the amendment now, you can actually put the rest of the provisions right in writing first. Probably advise.
Yeah. I'm just thinking Kirsten should maybe have some time to write it appropriately.
And, you know, if I may.
Absolutely.
You could pass it in substantial form right now and then just amend it at a later meeting, too, if you would rather have the rest of the provisions ongoing to effect, or you could hold off on the whole thing. I would advise the former, but.
I think with the health, health part of it is going to actually be implemented when we have our contracts signed, so maybe we can have something ready at that point to complete the health portion of it.
That's what I was going to say. I mean, if you look at the resolution, everything except that health, that physical examination requirement goes into effect November 1, and the physical exam requirements are upon the signing of the contract, so if it is your desire to have that amendment version for those physicals, we can certainly do that prior to that contract signing.
I think that's all.
Is that okay?
I think so.
I think that makes good sense. Any other questions for Ryan, or for Todd, or for Erin, for Ken, or for Kirsten? And you've all worked really hard on all of those pieces, and it's taken a monumental workload to make this happen, but it's extremely important that we get this done and done right, and we appreciate your expertise. Todd, do you have any comments?
Well, hopefully, we'll be able to share information with Volunteers of America if the kids had a physical there. Most of the kids that are at the juvenile detention center are not participating in sports in school, so, but that would be helpful on occasion to have those that are done. But we will be, you know, I have a meeting tomorrow again with some medical people to try to, to answer some more questions that they have and get the definition of what their definition of a physical is. I don't believe it includes blood work at this time unless that's, you know, some indication that that's necessary, so I'm confident that we'll be able to reach, you know, agreement with them shortly and get things implemented fairly quickly. We have a day picked, you know, Wednesdays is our day that's available for, they've indicated they're available, so, well, once we implement it, we get caught up with the kids that are in the JDC and then just go on a weekly basis on what we need. So, we will be, you know, if the kid goes from JDC over to Volunteers of America, I would hope that they wouldn't have to do a physical as well over there and vice versa. The kid happens to have been over at Volunteers of America three months ago, it comes to us, that we can share information.
Any other questions for Todd? Do you have any other comments, Todd?
We're proceeding, we're, you know, we're down to the point where what we're training on now is basically administrative type of things, what's our, you know, fiscal responsibility. It's kind of, it's very dry. It's the first part of the book for the staff members, but they're going over that as well. But we've got, all the other policies, for the most part, have been implemented when it comes to, you know, discipline, and we've been doing, you know, things in that area. So, really, we're just trying to make sure things go smooth the next couple of weeks. There's been a couple hitches with, with the documents on our computer and getting, you know, those being available to show and to print properly, and we just keep going back, and IT's been helpful in working on the problems as they, as they show up. Sometimes they're printing in two spots, or just little things.
Erin, you've put a boatload of time into this. Do you have any comments?
I just want to reiterate the thank you to everyone that has helped this project get to where it's at, Ryan's expertise and Todd and his staff and Bill, staff and the training and the work, and the, we've had some work groups, too, that's been advising this process, so thank you to those volunteers who've been involved.
Thank you. Kirsten, any comments?
Nothing further.
Okay. With that, is there anyone from the audience who would like to make any comments? I don't think there is, but frankly, with this size of a project and length, we'll make sure they have the opportunity before we do something. If not, I'm looking for a motion.
A motion to approve, and Kirsten, do we, what do we need on that?
We're going to need to have a resolution establishing the effective date.
And I, I believe it's in your proposed resolution, language setting aside the health assessment part of that, and so passing that substantially as proposed in the agenda items, I think, is sufficient. You can revisit any other details later if you'd like to amend it at a later date, but I believe there's a delay in implementation for that one policy anyway in your proposed resolution, if you look at the last part.
Did you want me to read that? Minnehaha County Commission, and that the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center. Center Policies and Procedures Manual presented for consideration for the adoption on the fifteenth day of October two thousand thirteen is hereby adopted by an effective date for implementation of November first two thousand thirteen, with the exception of the physical examination requirements that will be effective upon the signature of the contract for said physical examinations. That's good enough?
Good enough.
That's my motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second, as per what's read, and I think it's exactly what was printed, so we're good. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second, and I think we'll do a roll call vote just because it's of its significance.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes. Motion unanimously passes again. Thank you so much for your work, and I'm sure we'll have continuing conversations about how this is working and the implementation and the results, frankly. So thank you.
The next item is Minnehaw County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
So anyone have any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
At first, a report on the Ambulances, Rural Ambulance Association had a meeting, and they did discuss some technical things about some types of patients, but they really are thankful for the support that they received this year from the county, and they're kind of looking forward to the process that Lynda Young is going to set up to train additional EMTs. Their, the exact way that's going to work isn't quite arranged yet, but they believe that's going to be very helpful, and so they're, they're pretty happy with us. We also had a museum board meeting, and we just obviously talked about, you know, moving forward with the collection facility and getting an MOU with the city, et cetera. Anyway, that's my question.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Since Monty's in the room, I'll just report that I met with him last week, and one of the things that he brought forward was that Legal Edge and New World are now working together, and so it's just a matter of ours, different offices working to get trained in order to implement that. Anything else to add to that?
Monty Watermark, Information Technology Director. Yeah, the Legal Edge project has been a very long, drawn-out project that, as an IT department, we just kind of are on the sidelines encouraging everybody involved to keep making progress. So we've been doing that. One of the most significant components that we've been working with the vendor lately is to get that interface between New World so we can have cases from, from law enforcement, basically, flow over to the state's attorney's office. So that's the piece that we've gotten put into place. There are just a couple of little kinks that they're working out on that. We have scheduled training for the middle of November to get the state's attorney's office, public defender and public advocate, in, and we're doing a train-the-trainer type of sessions where those departments will have kind of some team leads that will come to training to then help train the rest of their offices. They're experts in how their workflow and their office works, so we're kind of leaning on them to participate in training the rest of their department. So we're, we're making progress. It has been a challenge getting people to get into the software, to, to use it and test it, to give us feedback if, you know, if it's going to work, and do everything that they need it to do. So that's been a challenge, because their offices are busy just processing, you know, their, their day-to-day things that they need to do to get their jobs done. So it's been a challenge just getting everybody involved, but we are making progress, and we're just at that point now where we're going to do training here in November, and unless someone tells me that there's some key component that, that doesn't allow them to use that software in their office, we're, we're keeping nudging forward. Any questions?
Only comments I would make is your diligence in keeping this thing on track, and for the number of years that this thing has been, let's say, in transit, it's been amazing that we're this close to being finished, and frankly, with our time and investment in making this happen, it's a huge labor-saving device for all of three of the legal entities that we work with, so it could make a big difference to them, and I appreciate your leadership in getting that finished.
Thank you. I will report also, I guess, now that I think about it, the public defender's office made a couple of site visits, one of them recently from Hennepin County, who also uses Legal Edge. They're using it in a little bit different, a little bit different way in that they purchased the source code, so in a lot of aspects, they purchased what Legal Edge had, and then they have the in-house developers to take that software, modify it, tweak it, make it work how they want. Unfortunately, we don't have that flexibility, because there, there's a pretty large upfront cost to purchase that source code. Additionally, you have to have the programmers that program in that language. We're programming in different languages, so it would be a cost staffing-wise to do that, so that's really not an option for us. It wasn't ever something that was considered at the very beginning of this project, and it's too late to change that now. So we're really relying on the vendor, and we'll be working with the vendor, we'll be paying vendor maintenance, so if there are things that need to be fixed that are bugs, that will be part of our support contract. If there are enhancements that we want to make, that will be the cost of the county to, to have those enhancements or changes made. We can sometimes negotiate those, you know, with, with vendor, but there may be some things that need to be tweaked, and we'll work through that the best we can.
How do I say this gently? What's the cost of purchasing the source code? Because when you have the ability to purchase the source code, I always get a little nervous about having somebody's trade secrets, so to speak, sold to you. Does that mean that they're, some point down the road, maybe not going to support it?
Or? No, so there are sometimes vendors that will let you purchase source code, and I've, I've seen that before. Typically, they're going to make you pay a pretty hefty fee for that, because you could theoretically not pay yearly maintenance, and that's a lot of those software vendors, you know, revenue stream is, yeah, sure, they sell software upfront, but in order to, to stay around, they're, they're depending on your yearly maintenance fees so that they can continue to function as a company, because they're not always selling that much new software to new customers every year. So they rely on that revenue stream, and sometimes that, that can have a big effect on their yearly revenue stream. So I believe, to get back to your question, I believe there is a price of a hundred and some thousand dollars to purchase source code upfront. I couldn't tell you what that does to the yearly maintenance fee. I suspect there's probably still something, but, but maybe not as much, because you're not relying on them. No, the challenge would be then from a staffing perspective, you know, we, there's the potential that we could, you know, train some of our programming staff in that language, but that's a huge, huge undertaking, so, you know, if, if you hire a person, well, then you kind of need more than one person, so that's a huge undertaking that I think at this point really isn't in cards.
It's a conversation we need to consider down the road, just having an agreement with them on purchasing the source code and what the value would be.
Possibility.
Just in case.
Yeah, it's a possibility. You know, I have seen some contracts as well where, you know, if you're concerned about the stability of a company, you can have something in place. I believe we have a, an agreement in place with New World where if they were to go out of business, let's say, we could purchase the source code. So there are those types of agreements that, that you can negotiate as well, so.
Well, again, thank you for all your work. Appreciate that. Mr. Heiburger?
I have one more highway comment.
Sure.
And that was that I met with Highway last week, too, and one of the things on their list for this next year is that they will have to have some boiler repairs, fairly significant, so just be looking forward to, to that coming forward.
Commissioner Kelly?
On metro management, Darren has assembled a group represented by the metro people, the county and the city, to just do a intense analysis on operations and, and just reviewing the whole way that metro works and where they're going, so it's a, it's an ongoing deal, probably be, I don't know, four, I think, four or five months maybe in the, and I don't know if anything will come out of that that comes to us, but, but it's just an attempt by Darren to say, let's look at where we are and what we've been doing and make sure it fits into today's marketplace.
Thank you. Other comments? If not, any old business? No old business. With that, we have just a personnel item, I believe, for exec session. So I'd like a motion to go into exec session for personnel. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion to go into exec session for personnel. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. We'll be back here in five minutes.